The meeting will come to order. This is a meeting of the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee, meeting under Zoom conditions as approved by the governor and the emergency pandemic situation. This evening's meeting is being recorded. We will begin with, we have no minutes, correct, to approve?
Correct.
The mayor is not here yet, so I will begin with public speak. If you're here for public speak, we treat it the same as, you're not public.
But it's a public announcement.
Okay. Public speak, the same as it is done for the city council. You have three minutes to state your opinion. After public speak is done, I will not open the floor to further public comment. So everybody who's on the call knows, I'm gonna steal your thunder there, Omar. If you have questions, please feel free to email the city councilors anytime, or make a phone call if you know them. We will answer questions, but tonight is purely for public comment. Also, the city council finance committee will not be voting on these items until the 26th. There is another public hearing where you will be able to give further comment on June 2nd for the entire city council. And finally, the city council finance committee does not have, nor does the city council, the authority to add to the budget or create new budget areas. The city council can only cut the budget, and we will, that can only happen under the full council. So if you would like to speak, now is the time. Please use the reaction button and raise your hand so I know you want to speak to the Seeing none, I am closing public speak and moving on.
Can I say something?
Oh, you had your hand up and you took it down. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This Sunday, we are gonna have a discussion on how to read the budget. That meeting is open to everybody. I just wanna be clear with the public, it's to everybody. You can contact me at hcomet@easthamptonma.gov, or to my number, 413-877-2676. I will send you the link for the Zoom account, so that way you can be part of it. What we're gonna discuss there is how to read the budget. That's it. My plan is not to go line by line discussing how we discuss where the money's going or not, it's how to read the budget, that way the public has the knowledge to understand when the budget is out. That's it. Been saying that, let's go to the meeting.
Is that Zoom meeting, a council meeting?
No, 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 no. It's something about myself.
It's your own Zoom account.
That way people can...
Okay.
Will you be posting that on the East Hampton page? Because if people aren't listening to this, they won't know to email you to get the numbers.
I will do it tonight. I was so busy all day, I couldn't put it in any page, but I'm planning to do so later tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Councilors, at the end of this meeting, I do want to have a little discussion about two items of business that are not related to the budget. Well, they are related to the budget hearings, but I do wanna make sure, if you could remind me. And Jen, from last night, I believe, and you should discuss this with the mayor, that any small deficits that we discover in our budget hearings, we should simply leave alone rather than redo the entire budget and the revenue. In my opinion, they can be dealt with with pre-cash or stabilization supplemental appropriations in the fall. That's just my opinion on how to deal with it. Go ahead, Jen.
The mayor and I actually spoke about that today. So the only expected adjustment will be for the library.
Well, you also have a board of public works issues.
Even that, for $450, there's probably money to move around. I mean, it's...
You mean inter department, intra department transfers. Okay, good enough, good. All right, I just didn't think we should change the entire budget for small amount. All right, I'm gonna move on, and I'm gonna share the screen, and we're gonna start with public safety and the police department. I'm bringing up the police department numbers, but Bob, I'd like you to use this time to maybe bullet point some of the narrative that was nicely done by you, and that's in the package, everybody can read it, but we really just deal with the numbers here. So the floor is yours if you would like to go over anything and discuss anything that you'd like to bring forward that might have been in the narrative.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, thank you, Councilor Riss. So I think in the narrative piece itself, I think it pretty much speaks for itself. Some of the highlighted things that I wanna point out are just our statistics, even in the pandemic, our 2020 numbers are very similar to what they were in 2019, and that was during the pandemic with everybody home, as far as cost per service. Crime was definitely down for sure. And then the other trends that we have is we have, I added this year, use of force. As you can see, there was five uses of force by the East Hampton Police Department. So I wanted to add that, and then the other thing we added this year that was new was traffic and crosswalk safety grants. We received 18,000 in 2020, and then a burn grant to the Bureau of Justice, we received But other than that, you know, our objective is to maintain staffing levels, that's number one, the community safety, and then of course, replacing upgraded equipment. And then we're constantly working on policies. So those are some of the highlights, obviously from a busy year with the pandemic and policing in general. So with that, I will, what do you wanna do, counselor? Do you wanna just go line by line?
What we do is we go over the numbers, and I ask councilors if they have any questions as we go through them. And I usually start, and at any time, you as a mayor can come through. Hi, Jen, what's up? Jen, it's important that you use your raise your hand issue because I don't have all, everybody, or...
Gotcha.
Maybe I can ask Omar and Peg if you see a hand up, please.
Yeah, but we cannot see everybody either.
I gotcha.
All right, because of her, so...
I will do that.
What would you like to say?
I just, I would like to make two comments about these numbers before we get started. The salary amount, the total salary amount, the 2553799...
Are you?
Yep. Should be decreased by 10,000, and the 85160 should be increased by 10,000. And that's only because there are two line items that, based on their account number, would typically be salary items. But I spoke with our auditor, and she informed me that for some reason, she thinks it's because of the police contract. They are not included in the salary total. They are actually for their supplies and services, I'm sorry, and they are medical expense and uniform allowance, 5173 and 5191. So nothing, the bottom line does not change, that 10,000 just needs to be reclassified, which I will do in the final.
2543799 and 95160.
Exactly.
As we had some minor changes yesterday, as soon as we finish the budget hearings on the 20th, we should republish corrected document to this full council and put it on the website, I would imagine. We see salaries going down from 2020 actual. Bob, is that a change in manpower, I'm sorry, officers person power? You see this here?
Yeah, I see it. Now, we, I would say at best, we have one additional officer on a grant, so that wouldn't be showing.
Okay. Not a lot of money.
No, no.
The other thing to ask, this is specifically with regard to the fact that staffing hasn't changed, even though the mayor requested a 2.5% drop. And I want the public to know this, first of all, if you have to make staffing changes by contract, you're required to actually lay off officers who were last hired.
That's correct.
As of seniority, that's correct.
Yeah, it's contractual, and the number that we were asked to reduce by was 3%, counselor.
Okay. Along those lines, I'm very proud of the city and the police department, because for years, I know the city council has stressed that we want diversity in the ranks, and we now have the latest recruits, which would be the ones laid off, which I'm very happy we're not doing, two African Americans and a young woman have recently been hired. Am I correct on that?
Yes, matter of fact, two of them are currently in the police academy.
So that would be very good to maintain that diversity. I have no other questions on this budget. I know the overtime is where it is. Oh, I have one question. What is overtime typically used for?
Well, there's three classifications of overtime. So there's overtime pay, investigative overtime, and then training overtime. So the normal overtime pay is for backfilling shifts, for contractual time off vacation, personal time, and we don't have a minimum manning in the police department. We have kind of an unwritten minimum manning based on officer safety. So by way of example, on midnight shifts, we could run, we could drop down to three cars on the mid shift, so I wouldn't have to fill during the week, so I wouldn't have to fill an overtime for that fourth car or fifth car. So we do save money where we can, where we can move shifts around. To some degree, I can move some people around, but it's, again, it's contractual. One of the other things I'd like to point out is that with the police reform bill now passed, we, basically the special police officers are gonna go away. So we won't be able to hire, after July 1st, we're not gonna be able to hire any part-time special police officers. And the way that the reform bill is written, that for certification purposes, all of the police officers in the Commonwealth have to have the exact same amount of training, which means that the part-time officers are gonna create a bridge academy to get them so that they're basically full-time status trained. What that means for the budget purpose, for our budget purpose, is that I augment a lot of my overtime by using specials. We pay them a minimal amount of money per hour compared to the full-time officers, and they work the same beat, they'll still work the same patrol beat. The difference now is, when those specials go away, I'm gonna have to fill those, what would have been special beats, I'll have to fill those beats with overtime. So I would say in the next, probably the next year or so, not this coming year, but the following year, it's gonna take three years to implement, we're gonna see significant increases in our overtime that would have been saved by hiring specials.
Okay, I saw Counselor Conna stand up.
Yeah, I think Chief Alberti, you may have already answered my question. My question was going to be, if you have added staff, why is overtime going up? And then you had the sentence of, we can't use specials, and that totally makes sense to me, why you would need additional overtime. So I no longer have a question, you have preemptively answered it, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Conna, on the budget at all? Okay, Counselor Gomez?
Yes, thank you. I only have one question, it's kinda concern, is about the incentive. Before was $300,000 in 2021, and it's only $219. Is that money, that amount money real, or is something that probably in the future, we have to come back? You have to come back to the full city council to act for more money from free cash or something like that to cover those costs? Because I'm pretty sure we have to pay that money, right?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor Gomez. So the bulk of the 3% cut came from that line item, and the reason for that is, we pay, we pay the incentive about twice a year for the majority of the officers, which means I could get through December with that line item into the spring before I would have to go back for an appropriation, and that'll give us enough time to see, you know, fiscally where the city stands.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the councilors on the police budget? Counselor Conna?
Seconds from a clean getaway. So I do see, though, a line item that says police specials. How does that, if you can't use them, how does that come into play?
This item right here, Peg.
Pardon me?
This one right here?
Uh, no. Nope, you're not, no, it's...
It's the next page.
It's the next page, it's 5145, account 5145. Apparently it's not on this. Oh, it's all the way at the top, yeah, I guess you were right. Yeah, you were right, Jen, 42350, sorry. So, yes, go ahead, Chief.
So the way that, so the way the legislation is written is, the part-time police officers are gonna have three years alphabetically to get this bridge academy done. So we can't hire any additional specials after July 1st, but we can maintain the ones that we have, we could still utilize them in that special capacity, but over the course of the next three years, excuse me, they're gonna have to do this bridge academy, which will essentially make them full-time police officers. And with that, my concern is gonna be, once these specials receive that training and are now certified full-time police officers in the Commonwealth, they could pretty much go anywhere and apply for police job, full-time police jobs. So even in that regard, we're gonna, we may have attrition, losing our specials, because once they're trained full-time, they may not wanna work part-time for us, when they could have the opportunity to go work full-time somewhere else.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Any comments on the treasurer or the mayor? Hearing none, I'm gonna go forward. This is the rest of the budget, this is pretty much totally level funded, supplies, et cetera. Now we're talking crossing guards, looks like that's pretty much level funded, so I had no questions, anything from the councilors on crossing guards?
Well, it's a little bit higher than level funded, so I'm assuming...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at these two figures, I apologize.
We either have a couple more crossing, first of all, let me start by saying, we can pay them whatever they need to be paid, and probably way more. I just wanna find out if it's because we have more of them, or we actually have given them more money, which would be a miracle in and of itself. So I'm just curious where that differentiation comes in.
So they are, excuse me, they are getting a raise, minimum wage. So that's where that's coming from, counselor.
Okay.
What is our minimum? Did we get up to 15 an hour in Massachusetts yet?
1350.
No, that's not bad, we're getting, okay. Anything, Counselor Gomez, on this?
No.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Detention, this is level funded.
Yes, and that's, that is, that's based on our population. We pay the, so we pay the Hampshire County Jail, instead of holding prisoner, prisoners here, we bring them up to the, we bring them up to the jail now. So it's a centralized location throughout the county, and all the police departments utilize this facility, and they charge us based on our, based on each town's population. But it saves us from putting a police officer in booking on overtime for prisoner watch, and it saves us from having to hire detention attendants like we did way, way back when. I was one, actually.
Is that a flat rate, Chief, where it's 15 to 50 regardless of how many people you bring up to them?
That's correct, exactly, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Moving on to animal control, this is an inter municipal agreement, so again, this is very similar to the detention, we give out a flat fee to, for animal control, where is that? That's in Westfield now?
Yeah, correct, it's in Westfield.
Okay. I have no question, it hasn't been increased or decreased or anything. Any questions from Counselor Conna, Counselor Gomez?
No.
I don't have any.
Dispatch, Brenda, you're up.
I'm gonna let her sit in my seat.
Oh, she's in the same place, okay.
That warms it up for her.
Oh, thanks.
Brenda, I apologize for not sending the thing to you originally, the agenda. As I said with Chief Alberti, if you have anything on the narrative you'd like to bring up, highlights or anything that you feel that the public who might see this or the council should know, you should use this time now on the narrative, otherwise we'll just go into the numbers.
Yeah. Our call volume went down a little bit this year, this past year due to COVID. We are still getting several calls. Dispatches are handling over 18,000 calls for service, that's including police and fire. I was able to secure one grant from State 911 for $62,033, and another one for $14,000. The $14,000 one, I used it for all my dispatch training that is mandatory yearly. We have 16 hours per year per dispatcher that needs to be certified through State 911. Different courses, along with the Next Gen 911 that we work on, is always being upgraded, so we have to update our dispatchers on different policies for EMD, medical emergency dispatching, and our 911, and different calls that we take, like domestics and so on. So that's yearly, we do that every year. Not much has changed in dispatch, per se, except for, you know, we're getting a lot of calls and our grants and our dispatch training that we're doing yearly, each dispatcher has to do 16 hours, that's about it.
Okay, Brenda, I'm just looking at the actual FTEs, we're up, looks like we're up one half of an FTE now at seven, so that's an additional part-time person, is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. So that accounts for the increase in salary here?
Yes.
On this line, my curse is over. Okay, I have no other questions, Counselor Conna?
So I'm, this is really picky, and I apologize in advance, it's more just so I understand. So radio, telephones, and other communication, so typically the budget puts you at like 300 or something, but you clearly every year go over that, and even this year, you're closer to $1,000 for the year. What constitutes that? When we talk about radios, telephones, and what are those, and do we really think we're gonna hit 300, or we're gonna need an appropriation, I'm gonna guess, at some point next year?
Yeah, I have a work cellphone, and it's $500 a year, just for my cellphone.
Okay. I'm curious, what, so why wouldn't we, well, why wouldn't we just budget for that then, as opposed to $300, if we know 300 is low?
We're asked to cut. Right, we're asked to cut.
And we take some expenses from the grant, too.
Right, I take some of my expenses from the grant and pay salaries, training, and all that out of my grant money.
Oh, okay.
And also equipment for dispatch, telephone.
So the first 300 will come out of your budget, and then any excess will be paid by your grant?
Yes.
Ah, got it, thank you.
That helps. Anything else, Counselor Conna?
No.
Counselor Gomez?
I do only have one question, and apologize in advance, in case I couldn't read it this well, and probably I'm being so busy and tired, they couldn't understand it. But in part-time dispatcher account, they say 45 hours, and then for the position is only one, it is 45 hours, it's one, I know you said before it's more than one, but what is only one there?
I hear, this is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So I have one part-timer that works 20 hours per week, that also gets benefits, you get life insurance, or health insurance, and sick days and so on, that's benefited.
So she'll be, she'll be 20 something hours instead of 45 hours there, or?
Well, that's per pay period.
Per pay period.
Okay.
Per pay period.
Okay.
But then the rest of it is from...
Yeah, why wouldn't that say 23? Because the heading is hours per week.
Yes, that's, that's my question, thank you, Peg.
And then that's, that's a mistake, you should say 20 hours.
And again, I don't wanna sound like Peg again, I don't wanna...
No, he works picky, but I just wanna... He works with the hours of pay period, every pay period.
So this should say hours per pay period?
No, no, I think we just change it to 2250.
Right, exactly.
Are you getting that, Jen? Okay, for correction. That's okay, because if...
I didn't see that.
If we dumb councilors can catch it, somebody smarter than us can probably catch it. I know, I'm speaking for myself. Jen, yes?
Jen, yeah. I'm sorry that I said Jen, too, but I saw her, I...
Oh, it's fine, I didn't know.
Sorry, I physically raised my hand, and then I was like, oh, I'm supposed to raise my hand, that's why I took it down.
It's just that I'm lucky enough to see you. Everybody, when we share the screen, I can't see everybody.
I just wanna clarify with Brenda, if we change that hours per week to 22.5, the FTE amount is gonna change, and I'm just mentioning that because like in '21, it was 1.13, so I just wanna make sure that it should be less than one. Like, so you have one part-time dispatcher who works 22.5-ish hours each week?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm gonna read, so that's not gonna be one, it's gonna be, I don't know.
It should be .5 here, or whatever it is?
Yeah, I'll do the, to the decimal, but it should be more...
We only have one part-time dispatcher, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, I'm mixing. Anything else, councilors, on dispatch?
That was the only thing that I have.
I'm gonna move on, then.
Thanks, Brenda.
Chief Alberti and Brenda, you're done. The vote on this will happen on the 26th. I've told all the department heads, if any of the councilors would like your attendance, they will email me and tell me so that I can request your attendance at that meeting, in case any changes to the budget are being contemplated.
Oh, I have one more question.
Oh, for which, which one?
For the chief.
All the way up to fire, all the way up to...
Do I, no, you don't have to scroll anywhere. Do I, do I see, should I see, I don't see a cruiser on here?
Mayor, you wanna handle that one?
I appreciate the chief's attempt every year to put a cruiser. We start our budget conversation with, okay, where'd you put the cruiser? And I just cross it out, and, you know, and he laughs like he is now.
So you are not former, formally asking for money for a cruiser?
Not, not, not in the budget, no.
Gotcha, not in the budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Holding out for an all-electric cruiser.
Thanks, chief.
All right, moving on. Chief Norris, you're up. Same thing as I said to the police chief? Where are you, chief? I don't see, I don't know, say something, chief, maybe my screen will see you.
Good evening, everyone.
There you are, I see you. Please highlight your narrative on, we're starting with the regular fire department, there is a section on the ambulance, so let's start with the regular fire department, and hire your, highlight your narrative, as I've asked all department heads while I scroll to the actual numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, good afternoon, everyone. In terms of looking at the data from last year, the call volume for both fire and EMS has gone up for the past year from 2019 and 2020. And when we also looked at, more importantly, the severity of those calls, not only did the call volume go up, but we've seen a pretty high uptick in the severity. Certainly COVID had a large part to that with some of the respiratory calls and respiratory distress that we had, a lot of cardiac issues, and then also with some of the Narcan calls throughout the city as well. A couple of things, just in terms of how that impacts our operation, it's important to understand that, obviously, based on state regulations, we have to send at least two people when we transport a patient, and when you talk about those more severe calls, we actually add a third person in there when they're transporting these severe patients to Bay State to help with that ongoing patient care and quality. In terms of fire prevention, that certainly has... In terms of fire prevention, um, that certainly has had an uptick as well, looking at the data from the past years. Um, one and a half times the increase over two thousand nineteen. Um, in terms of finances to kind of transition into tonight's topics, we certainly have continued to be aggressive looking at some of our grants, both small and large. Um, we've been very successful in those. And we're hoping going into this next fiscal year, we can certainly continue that trend and uh, maybe get some good news on some uh, capital projects we have pending out there as well. So those are some of just the highlights. Um, a- and then finally, just as we're gonna talk about EMS here in a little bit as well, it's important just for the public to remember that as we come up on our first year with the West Hampton contract, um, that has been extremely successful, um, both operationally and administratively. Um, as of today, um, in terms of looking at our revenue and the trends there, we've collected in transports just over seventy-eight thousand dollars in revenue from West Hampton alone. Um, and obviously that does not include the retainer fee of twenty-five thousand dollars. So certainly based on our projections that we've spoken about, we're going to hit and exceed those just for that contract alone. So I'll stop there on kind of the narrative.
All right, I had two quote, just a couple. Uh, as you can see, we have four firefighters that are still on grant pay, is that correct?
Yeah, um, that's that three-year safer grant, we're going into year two of that, um, where the grant currently pays seventy-five percent of the overall cost. And then the city incurs the remaining balance twenty-five percent. And then that will change March of twenty twenty-two, when those percentages then revert to, uh, the federal government will pay thirty-five percent of that overall share. And then the city will incur the sixty-five percent balance.
So that leads me to ask, and since that's in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, is the firefighter salary line accounting for the grant uh, change percentage pay? I'm assuming Jen and, and chief, you've accounted for that, that's why that's, one of the reasons that salary line is up.
Yep, that, that certainly is the case, counselor, working with the mayor and her financial team, uh, we took that into consideration. So you'll see that change in cost share percentages, March twenty twenty-two. And that, that is reflected in this request.
So that plus obvious contract uh, increases is reflected in the one million two hundred and fifty-three thousand, twenty-two dollar uh, account for firefighter salaries, which is a, is a jump. Um, I also noticed that the deputy fire chief is still not filled, so you're using captains to. And that, that is something that probably the mayor will not address until we get a better sense of where we are fiscally in the next couple of years. Uh, lastly, I know that overtime has been an issue all the time. I'm curious how much you've got, if you have it without looking up and spending a lot of time. What's your actual overtime cost for this fiscal year to date?
The overtime costs at the end of this fiscal year is gonna be right around two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And we, we did a supplemental to cover that.
That is correct.
So we're starting at a hundred thousand as we did before?
Correct.
Um, I have no other questions, wait, wait, I have something here. Incentive is, you asked for two fifty-eight, the mayor granted you one twenty-nine. That's contractual, I'm, I'm curious whether you or the mayor, how do we get out of not paying that? Or we, or is that just like what the chief just said? You have to pay the incentive up until December and then seeing how it goes, you'll pay more, you'll ask for more money next fiscal year, I mean, next year.
That, that's correct, it's the same concept and it is contractual.
Okay, good. That's my last question, Counselor Connor, for yours, if you have questions?
Uh, Chief, and I apologize, I was reading some of these numbers and so you may have said this, but um, it, it, is there an expectation that your overtime will be less than it has in the past? I think we've talked about, I think the, the additional folks coming out of the academy will, will augment. Are we at that place where people have come out of the academy, they're up to speed? And do you expect your overtime to be more reasonable?
Yeah, certainly, one of the challenges we ran into this year was with those four new safer positions. Um, two, two things happened, they had to go to the academy, um, and they were sent over the summer months. And then in addition to that, um, they, they were all basic EMTs, which obviously, um, our service provides a paramedic level service. So we had to augment both their time when they were at the academy. And then we still are currently as we're going through paramedic training. Um, one of the things that we've tried to do is, I use the term stabilize, we're trying to stabilize that overtime line item where it's at. One of the things that we're doing as we're hiring a couple of people right now to backfill vacancies, is we've already developed an in-house orientation program to enable us to get them on shift, use them hopefully during those peak vacation periods of July and August, not send them to the academy for ten weeks during the summer, but wait until the fall time when people are back visiting vacations. Um, that would, that way there, we hopefully get more benefit to offset that cost. The other thing that we've done in terms of operations is we've changed around the way we handle our training in-house. So instead of bringing people all back on overtime for required training, we're actually just bringing two people back to uh, cover an ambulance and doing more of that training on duty. Um, we know looking at our data, that the majority of our calls are EMS. So by bringing two people back for coverage, they can cover that first EMS call that has a higher probability, enabling us to do more training on, on shift, not in current and overtime.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Connor?
No.
I just wanna comment that over the many years I've been on the council, overtime pay and the fire department has always been an issue, well, you have minimum manning, but I was always hopeful that with increased staff, like with the safer grant, I'd rather pay firefighters regular pay and not have to pay overtime. So I'm happier attacking that as best you can, chief. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, I just have one question, eh, and it's about the contract and um, and the overtime. So chief, you said that in overtime, it's gonna be two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And the contract from uh, West Hampton, the revenue is hundred and three. So my question basically is, uh, with that contract and the amount of cost that we have to respond to West Hampton, that increase our overtime?
It, it does, and I think that'll be more, more apparent when we go through the EMS budget. You'll see uh, requested increase for overtime on EMS. And that increase is directly tied to the city contract for West Hampton. When that contract was signed, it was put in the contract that we backfill for two people each time it goes to West Hampton. So that's what that overtime request is for, is for that.
But it is less than the revenue, in other words, we have a net profit.
You, you're gonna, the, the city of East Hampton will have a net profit this fiscal year, um, close to a hundred thousand dollars.
That's good to hear. Anything else, we're gonna get into the ambulance, uh, anything else counselors on the firefighter? Okay, I'm going on to the. Um, there is an increase, or you asked for more, but it's pretty much down two point five percent, so, in all of your other supply and training accounts. I have no questions here, counselor, do you have any questions on this page that I have up now?
The page?
Yeah, this is the.
Uh, just, the last question is, we um, we don't see any money in the gas, oil and loop. It should usually seven hundred bucks, is um, who's gonna take care of that? It's gonna be uh, uh.
I think.
DPW?
DPW.
Eh, eh, normally from the DPW, that's correct.
Okay.
And what did the miscellaneous and professional technical services use to pay?
Um, that one there is typically goes towards um, any service contracts that we have. Right now, we're using some professional services to come in and do one more maintenance on our SCBA filling station. Um, based on um, requirements for the air quality put into the SCBAs, they have to come and calibrate that and service it each year, that's what that goes towards.
So it's, it's not funded now and you'll ask for more money if you have to do it later?
Correct, that's due next May, again, May of twenty twenty-two.
Peg, do you have anything on this? You're, you're muted Peg.
I can hear you Peg.
Okay.
No.
Moving on to ambulance, uh.
What was it?
Did you say something Omar, you okay?
No, I'm sorry, that was someone would call. Um, probably guys.
I note here that salaries are down here. And I'm just curious what uh, that's a mistake, it should have been highlighted on salaries, not that. I'm curious what that means, we, the budget was three oh five for ambulance. Why is it down a lot or are you covering it with the West Hampton money? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
So when you look at that part of the budget, of the very line above that, the EMS incentive, the same concept on the fire incentive is that will get us into the year twenty twenty-two, where we can kind of reevaluate in terms of their EMS incentives for paramedic services.
But what about salaries? That's my question was, it's down.
We, we, we don't pay any, that's your total for each year, there's no salaries paid out of it. Um, it, it probably could be labeled better, but that's your total for overtime pay, ALS, EMS, emergency and EMS incentives. That's your total for what the cities has called salaries over the years.
So when we talked.
The difference then is the EMS incentive number.
Correct.
That's what's driving it lower, it went from two ninety-two to eight thirty to two hundred seven five five.
And that drives the salaries lower.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, perhaps this line could be, maybe you and Jen could come up with a better line, cause it's confusing to me. And it may be confusing to others, I understand it now. But maybe that title could be something else, I don't know. The other thing I was going to ask was, you mentioned the overtime. Is the overtime here where it says pay emergency and ALS, these two accounts, is that where you anticipate West Hampton overtime, is that what?
That increases from the West Hampton contract.
So this overtime account here is purely for ambulance service to West Hampton?
Not purely, the increase is due to the West Hampton.
Oh, okay, the ten thousand increase, gotcha, okay. I have no other questions on the ambulance, uh, Counselor Connor?
I have a que- I, well, there, it appears that the numbers are different, so if you, if you go above under salaries, it says two fifty-three, two twenty-five, but then when you come down to the line, it says two twenty-six, seven fifty-five. Shouldn't that be two fifty-three, two fifty-five? Or the number above should be two twenty-six, seven fifty-five?
Yes, the, the number above should be two twenty-six, seven fifty-five.
Okay.
And then that thirty-four, six twenty-five should be sixty-one, one twenty-five.
Okay, so you will fix that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I want you to know, I said this last night, there's a lot of lines in this budget. I pay, I have no judgment on mining mistakes like this. They're gonna happen. Which is why it's great that we have people like Counselor Connor, who's an eye for numbers to catch these things. Cause I would gloss over them. Uh, building inspection.
Before you go down, I have a.
I forgot.
I'm here. I do only have one question, why the, from medical supplies go up from fourteen thousand to four, to twenty-five thousand?
Oh, that's a big increase, good, good catch.
Eleven thousand.
Yeah, so medical supplies has been an ongoing challenge for the past eleven months now. And I hate reverting back to it, but it's the um, unfortunate reality of COVID. I, I think the best example I can use is when you look at a case of gloves. A case of gloves eleven months ago, um, used to be about um, a hundred and twenty dollars for a case. And now it's two hundred and seventy dollars a case. Um, based on supply and demand for all of the medical supplies we use for the three ambulances, has um, significantly increased that line item.
Okay. That makes sense, that good catch there, Counselor Gomez. Anything else Omar?
Nope.
Moving on to building inspection, who, who deals with building inspector, uh, is this just the mayor? Is this under, the building inspector doesn't exist, so I'm just gonna ask you if there's any uh, anything you wanna say about it, but I know that we're in the middle of trying to hire a new building commissioner, et cetera.
Yeah, we are, so I mean, the, what, what we um, you know, what you see as far as the electrical inspector, gas and plumbing, a stipend, and spend that way for quite some time, weights and measures, we signed an intermunicipal agreement a couple of years back. Um, we have increased uh, the clerk support in the office as we're looking for a building commissioner right now, we have, and in the past, um, have had different commissioners from either Westfield or Northampton, um, pick up the, up the slack where they, they've come in. So um, this budget, you know, not a lot of changes, we're, we're in the process of interviewing and hopefully um, getting somebody on, on board. Uh, this has been a um, interesting um, office to keep staffed. And COVID certainly was a part of it, but also there's just a grave uh, shortage of building commissioners. So you can have a building inspector, but you need a commissioner to sign off on things. So we're, we're hopeful with the applicants, um, the group of applicants we have now.
My question is uh, simple, where does the stipend, um, I think the weights and measures is down here. Where does the stipend money get put in this budget? Where does it, where does it show up? I know you pay a stipend per inspection, correct?
Yeah.
So I'm curious where that dollar amount?
Would it be in supplies and services, Jen?
Is it in here, Jen? Jen?
Maybe you can? I'm here, I'm here, I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, I didn't know, you didn't say anything.
Sorry, I was muted.
Oh, I noticed this is up, twelve thousand three fifty, so I'm assuming that might include services, which is stipends.
Right. Yes, I'm just trying to remember the way that it's, it's uh, coded in here. Um. Yes, it is under the supplies and services under um.
It's under supplies and services, number two on this button.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And a big reason why this number continually, this, this has gone up, the um, this line item, and you see that big jump from twenty nineteen. So with weights and measures, we were under um, certifying weights and measures. So we went from a model where you would test one scale in each facility, when in fact you have to test every scales and uh, there, we have, we have many more scales. Um, so that has, you'll see that, that go up and I anticipate it to go up in twenty-three as well.
But this, this particular line right here pays that person, the intermunicipal agreement pays for the person to do that? Or is there a stipend on top of that?
There, there are fees and stipends on top of that in the agreement based on the amount of money.
Okay.
And the amount of, of thing, of that, of um, weights and measures, commercials, uh, commercial weight measures, uh, things like that, so that's like the, the staff fee.
Okay.
We're, we're looking, we've adjusted our fees once, I think in the last four years and then then the last time was maybe twenty-eight or some odd years, so that the fees, we're trying to gradually increase them um, to, to just offset what you see here.
Okay, Counselor Connor, do you have any questions on inspections of, it's now Counselor Gomez?
I just have a common kinda question-ish kinda, the um, seven. The um, seventeen hundred dollars from car allowance is not funded because now we provide a car, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. That's it.
Good. Yeah, we don't throw away our cars. We give them to our building commissioners.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I kind of know the answer. It's just for the public.
Okay. All right, uh, more on building inspection. This is standard stuff. Went up a little bit. And again, it's technical services here. That one. Any further questions on inspectors? I think that's it for this department. So I'm gonna go to, thank you chiefs, thank you um, Brenda and everybody for public safety. I'm gonna go now to uh, health and human services. All right, uh, Bree, did I see you on?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, uh, as I did with the other department heads, if you wanted to highlight your narrative. I know you've had a little bit to do this year.
Yeah.
So if you want to go over, anything you want to say to the public regarding it, then we'll go over the numbers.
Sure. So obviously twenty twenty was an unprecedented year for public health. Um, I do want to just thank the counselors and the mayor. We had a, a lot of support this year from you guys, which was, you know, made this year a little bit easier. And my board of health, um, super supportive and always a call away. So they were really easy to work with this year. Um, the board of health uh, issued many orders that the state then followed. So I was very, you know, proud of those orders that we put through. For example, like the mask order downtown, I think a couple of months later, the state ended up following a similar order to require masks in all public indoor and outdoor places. And then the essential business order that we put into place, which you know, required hand sanitizer at the entrance and um, aisles to be one way, as you'll see the sector-specific requirements from the state then followed. So I think East Hampton did a good job of keeping, you know, all the businesses safe before the state followed. And we're seeing that right now. Um, I think we did a really good job this year. Um, that's, we held two public drive-through flu clinics and one employee flu clinic. In the beginning of the pandemic, we solicited five hundred and sixty-three handmade masks through um, from residents. And then we were able to deliver those masks and eventually purchase masks um, with partnering with the Council on Aging, we delivered a thousand forty-six masks to residents throughout the city. And we held a drive-through mask giveaway and gave out about two thousand masks in the beginning of the pandemic when masks weren't as easily accessible. We did a lot of COVID outreach this year on Facebook, our website, using code RED. We held out, uh, handed out public health material, COVID information, hand sanitizer masks at the community center and even some of our city counselors, uh, canvassed their precincts and gave out that same information. We secured many grants from the state and from a few um, coalitions locally to help with staffing, especially contact tracing, which we were not equipped to do in the beginning of the pandemic. We received and managed a hundred and ninety-four COVID-related complaints in twenty twenty. Contact traced a total of eight hundred and thirteen COVID cases in twenty twenty. And in total, received two hundred and ninety-five complaints and conducted four hundred and twenty-three inspections. And in, early in the pandemic, we did have to suspend pretty much all inspections until um, unless they were emergency inspections. And we're, we to date are caught up with all of those. So um, right now, we're doing a lot of vaccine outreach. We are supporting the vaccine clinic in Northampton. And we are planning a COVID vaccine clinic at the high school for students and staff in the next two weeks. So we are busy and um, it's a year to remember, that's for sure.
I have a couple of questions because things are confusing to me.
Yeah.
We have a part-time nurse up above here that has point one three FTE and a point five part-time health inspector. Down here, the part-time nurse is point eight five. And there are figures here for that. So I think these numbers, Jen, are not consistent. Am I correct? The FTE numbers.
Yes, uh, that said though, there have been changes. First of all, where it says proposed part-time at the top, proposed part-time health inspector, that shouldn't say proposed part-time. That was from last year. She was granted a health inspector.
Yes, but the point five zero is correct.
Um.
My biggest question is the part-time nurse is not point one three, it's point eight five, if this is correct here.
How many hours does she?
Five hours a week.
Five hours a week. And the salary is twenty-seven thousand one.
Okay, so if it's five hours a week, then it shouldn't be point eight five. It should be the
Point one three.
She is full-time. Um, well, I am propos- so she's, I proposed her to be point eight five, thirty-four hours a week. She's gonna be funded by CARES and FEMA completely until December thirtieth. And then I requested um, half of her salary, which is the twenty-seven thousand, to be from December thirty-first to July one. So in essence, I am requesting a full-time public health nurse moving forward. But she is, I am only requesting twenty-seven thousand because I can fund her until December thirtieth with grant money.
Okay, so I'm just curious, I, I understand that. What should we show? Should we show point eight five even though some of the funding is grant-funded?
I don't think so.
No?
I think it should be
Point one three.
If, if, what is that? Is that half a year? Where, what are we talking? July, August, September, October, November, December? So that's, yeah, that's a half a year. So it should be point five of an FTE. And twenty-seven one fifty-six is what that half of an FTE will cost us.
So that's, that's what it should say because that's part of the budget.
If, if physics, I mean, we know that she's there. Is she, well, let me, let me ask this. Yeah, because we're only paying, we're only budgeting for half a person for the entire year. Well.
That is correct.
Be half a person. I don't believe.
Literally, it should see point, point five. But actual person on the job, it should be point eight five. So I don't know how we indicate that to the public, but I think the point five is correct because that matches the money. So Jenny.
Is your grant, Bree, gonna pay her twenty-seven one fifty-six until December?
Um, I have twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, so that's pretty much.
And this is for the second half of the year?
Yes.
I don't know. I just think it's confusing. Maybe we should do something to make that.
Excuse, may, may I comment?
Sure, sure.
Hi. Um, so the budget that we're presented, uh, that I propose um, by charter are, are expenditures of general fund dollars. So what should be reflected is the FTE of the general fund dollar.
So it should be point five?
Yeah, and, and just like the um, uh, other grants we get. So sometimes we have, like, in my office, when Alan Wolf worked, that was a grant-funded position for a large part of it. So it didn't show up because the city didn't pay for it. It was a grant position. Yeah, I agree. This should definitely reflect what the, the taxpayers are paying for.
Right. I agree, President.
So I, I, I think it should be point five.
It should be point five, it should be point five here and point five up here, correct?
That's what I would say, yeah.
Okay, Jen? What's up, Jen?
Well, it, so, Bree, without, without CARES funding, like, just, if this, if this were a normal year, how many hours was, is that position hired at?
Thirty-four.
Per week?
Yes.
For two weeks?
She's a, she's full-time thirty-four hours a week.
So it's point eight five from a point of view of how many hours she's working. But from the mayor's point of view, we're only funding right now, half of that. So I don't know, you guys can discuss it. It just should be, it should be clear.
Yes, well.
It are not the same right here, which is my original thing. So I think whatever you want to put down, I agree with Mayor and Pay. It should be point five. Because that, that reflects the amount of dollars we're spending.
Well, and, and I'm just confused as to the point five because up top it's point one three.
Right.
Originally it's
One of them's wrong.
Right, like originally it said hours per week was five, which means ten hours per pay period. So the point one three is
Is five dollars.
It would be, it wouldn't be point five if that's under normal circumstances what the hours would have been.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
It should be point five or whatever thirty-seven hours of, of thirty-four hours a week equates to in the FTE world of the city. Thirty-four hours equals what? And then take half of that. So this would say seventeen hours at point five, and that's what the, the taxpayer is paying for. The other half of her is being paid by a grant. Am I right about that?
That's more logical to me, Peg, but I'm not sure how, what does the DOR want you to do?
So, how about this, Bree, after, after this, um, mainly I just need to know, I know you said your amount was twenty-six what, thousand whatever. The amount that is coming out of your budget specifically, the general fund budget, how many hours is that gonna fund? That's what I need to know.
Okay, yeah, because I'm paying her one hundred percent CARES FEMA thirty-four hours a week from July one to December thirtieth, when CARES FEMA ends. And then from December thirty-first until July one of the next fiscal year, she's going to be thirty-four hours a week. So theoretically, we're not gonna touch the general fund, or we're not gonna touch my budget until December thirty-first.
What is the number? There's a number twenty-seven one fifty-six.
And that's December thirty-first to July one, at thirty-four hours a week in her hourly rate.
That's a good answer, because then otherwise everything has to change. Okay. Okay, Jenny, you're good now?
I am.
Count, are you done, Peg?
I guess. I, I'd like to see the final numbers on what the budget looks like, because I, I, we'll see. Yeah.
Well, I think this is gonna stay the same.
Yeah, that, that's important, that that number not change. I just think it needs to be reflected into what
This has to change.
We're paying for.
The FTEs have to change.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Gomez?
That was my concern, and you were spending a few minutes talking about it, and I'm so happy that you did.
I always strive to make you so happy. All right, moving on. Brendan, are you still here? Thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you so much for all the hard work. I believe East Hampton is a healthier community because of your departments.
I, and I'm just gonna say one thing also to Bree, which I will say more in the city council meeting. But Bree, you have done so much to bring forth the importance of public health in general. And then the importance of it during a pandemic. And you have really exemplified why this is such a critical department. I think you've done a stellar job and I, there, there isn't enough good things I can say about the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Connor, and my fellow public health ambassador.
I, I do agree a hundred percent with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brendan, we have the same uh, same accolades for you, but we'll let you speak first.
Thank you.
Uh, as I said to the others, you can go over your narrative now before we get to the numbers. Highlight anything you'd like to say about uh,
Is something hap- somebody's making noises that are weird.
Yeah, it is weird.
Okay, all right.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, so.
I'm gonna go to the numbers. Brendan, you go ahead and speak to anything you want to speak to.
Of course, of course. Uh, yeah, so first, I want to start off by thanking my staff. Uh, I've had, you know, such an amazing experience through this crazy pandemic. Um, and, you know, staff have gone, gone above and beyond, uh, doing what's within inside their normal duties. Um, so we lost a lot of volunteers due to the threat of the pandemic, um, because many of our volunteers are sixty-five years of age or older. And before the vaccine could come out, I made the decision to hold off on using any of our volunteers, whether it be for uh, medical rides or um, you know, helping us out at the center. It was a concern for me. Um, and of course, we value uh, the, the safety of our volunteers. So we had to back down from using a lot of the people who were there with us pre-pandemic. So again, that kind of leads back to the idea that staff uh, went outside of their normal duties to do things. And where this was kind of present was with the home shopping delivery program. Now, this is normally done by volunteers, but uh, between myself and an outreach worker and my activity coordinator, we were constantly out shopping at Biggie's for a number of people who had autoimmune disorders, who were just too scared to go out into the community. Um, you know, to face the potential threat of contracting COVID. And so this allowed a lot of those folks to really stay in place and to kind of weather out the pandemic, you know, for several months. And so while we've seen numbers drop, in the very beginning, we were, you know, at Biggie's several times a day, you know, just shopping for people who just were too nervous to get out. And had I not had the staff that I have, I, I don't know how it would have made it happen. Um, and so I'm, I'm very grateful for that. And I think that home shopping delivery program was a huge success in a time where people were just, again, too nervous to go out. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, and then in other areas, um, our outreach department has seen a huge increase in stats, um, between the full-time outreacher, outreach worker and the part-time outreach worker. Uh, we were dealing with roughly seven hundred and seventy-seven uh, unduplicated clients. Um, so this ranged from everything from Mass Health Services, Medicare Counseling, Emergency Fund Services, uh, Home Shopping Delivery, as I had mentioned, um, COVID wellness checks. Uh, so that, that component was always moving. And so I feel like outreach went above and beyond this year in, in tackling uh, you know, this issue. And so I feel like there were a lot of people who are just isolated and very vulnerable. And so those COVID wellness checks went a long way. Um, so, you know, I, I just felt like it was an important thing to have. Um, and it was nice. I, I mean, we weren't able to see our folks, but it just, man, uh, just even spending time with them on the phone, just to check in with them was uh, truly uh, you know, experience. And we all had our stories, you know, it was just a crazy year. Um, so, um, as far as uh, kind of going back, I just wanted to also give a shout out to Biggie's, um, with the Home Shopping Delivery Program. They, one thing that I forgot to mention when I was talking about that program, is that they were instrumental in allowing us to fast-track EBT transactions, so also known as SNAP benefits. Um, so when we had people who came to us that, you know, had these SNAP benefits that they just couldn't use, uh, Biggie's found a quick uh, pathway for us to use those EBT benefits. Because people ended up with extra benefits, but they weren't able to use them if they didn't get out to the store. So that was a huge plus, and it was able to target a population that's incredibly vulnerable. Um, all right, so going forward, uh, I just want to highlight, um, so we're now seeing a huge surge in transportation. And if we go back over the last year and a half or more, um, you can see that we've had um, close to fifty-three hundred one-way rides, um, with, you know, hundreds of, of passengers. And even if we only uh, had provided one ride to, say, the clinic, for example, um, it was, you know, just another person that we had in the mix. Um, so I just want to also give credit to our drivers who were on the front line. Um, you know, dealing with pandemic. And in fact, we've had a couple of people that we had to pull out of uh, their shifts because, you know, a rider would call us and tell us that they had been, they had contracted COVID. And so there was a period with transportation where, you know, we had to quarantine drivers because they were on the front line. And so that, that was pretty scary. Um, but, you know, they, they were out there still every day, ready to bring people to essential medical appointments. And so, uh, it was a huge uh, saving, a huge uh, lifesaver for our clients and uh, who are still being scheduled for medical appointments even throughout the pandemic. And then uh, also, one thing that I wanted to point out, and, and I can't thank the Health Department enough for this because this is something that kind of landed on the COA and the Health Department, uh, was the registration of people for vaccines. We obviously had a huge tech gap with a lot of our folks. And in the beginning of, of those vaccines, everyone can recall, if you didn't have a computer, you didn't have access. And it was a real shame, and two-on-one came later on down the road. Um, but even still, I mean, people are, were just waiting around, had no clue whether or not they were gonna be able to get the vaccine. And so Bree and her team, I, I, I can't even, you know, begin to describe how thankful we are for that because she would, you know, manage to get us these uh, back-channel links to the Northampton Clinic. Um, traveling for a lot of our folks is a problem. So Northampton was an essential access point. And so without Bree and her team, I, I'm not sure what we would have done, um, because we were using the same channels as everybody else to register our folks for vaccines. So I, I just want to give a huge shout out there. Um, and I think that's pretty much it for the highlights. Um, you know, so if you guys want to get into the numbers?
I only have a couple. And this goes to how I only have a couple, and this goes to how grants are looked. From our earlier conversation, the Health Department. This office aide, there's two office aides, if that's what that means by the two there. Is that point five eight, point five eight? They get fourteen thousand, six thirty four. Does that mean that each one is getting seven thousand dollars?
No, no, we had uh, pre COVID, we had Saturday uh morning hours at the center. And I'm still trying to figure out, you know, what that means, especially as we get ready to reopen. But the majority of hours fall on our Monday through Fri- Friday uh office aide.
Well, it just occurred to me, this seems like a small number for two people.
Yeah, so, yeah, and and again, um, tho- those few hours on Saturday, I would like to bring back when things kind of get a little bit more under control. But for now, the majority of those hours will be towards that Monday through Friday receptionist or office aide.
I guess you misunderstand my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have two office aides that are being paid a certain rate per hour? And which means, does this mean each one is getting eleven hours a week? Is that what that means? Because there's two and there's twenty three hours per week.
No, um, so one of the office aides is at eighteen hours per week.
Okay.
And the other one would have been at three if we still had Saturdays open.
Okay.
And and the three hour position was totally funded by uh local aid.
And we have grants here involved.
Yep.
And I see the activity coordinator is point eight three, but totally paid for by a grant. Okay.
Yep, that's been a position that's always been funded by the Executive Office of Elder Affairs Formula Grant.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we're w- we've always used that. And then as far as the two point five percent cut, um, it's familiar territory with our office aide. Uh, when I first started as a as the Director of the C O A. The eighteen hour position wasn't totally funded by the city, so we've always had, I mean, this is familiar territory. So we've always had some aspect of that, well, I shouldn't say always, but we for a good chunk of time, we've always had a portion of that office aide being funded by that E O E A grant.
So there's three people. There's an outreach assistant and two office aides. And an out- oh, four people, an outreach worker.
So when.
Is that true?
I'm sorry, what?
There's four people working for you, an outreach worker, two office aides, and an outreach assistant. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, and then the activity coordinator and three part time drivers.
All right, I'm looking at the ones that are funded by the city. Okay.
Uh, yeah, the short time drivers are.
Are funded by the city, too.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yep.
Mistated that. Okay. All right, uh, that's why this budget is up. Can I don't have any other questions, Counselor Coniff?
No, I don't think I do.
Casa Gomez?
I only have one, and I just want to know the reason why from uh the three drivers. Uh, the salary was forty two thousand in twenty twenty one, and now it's going to be only forty thousand.
Line here, I'm highlighting it.
Okay. Yeah, um, so with that, let's see here. That should have, um, and Jen, maybe you can help me out with this, but uh, that shouldn't have gone down, right? I mean, that we should have had step increases and everything like that.
If you look at the um line above it. You'll see that that's two thousand higher. So I think maybe it just has to do with how your Personnel Service spreadsheet was broken down.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so in other words, like, the total together um remains the same, but for whatever reason, it was flip flopped on the spreadsheet.
Does anything have to change here to make that?
So I guess they have to change that number? I mean, the bottom line is the same, but I just want to know if when you present it again, that will be a different number.
Brendan, what we'll do is I'll send you, after this, I'll send you back your um Personnel Service spreadsheet that I have, and you can just verify the um the breakdown of the um the end drivers.
Sure.
To the outreach. Is that what it is, outreach?
Yeah, so we've always had um part time outreach and the three drivers underneath account five one one eight. So we're deviating from that into the new fiscal year, right? So now they'll have their own separate account, because if that's the case, um, yeah, we may need to shift um some over, because uh two drivers are at eighteen hours, and then another driver is technically supposed to be at uh six hours.
Okay, and none of them, none of them do anything more than drive?
That's it.
Okay, so then, yeah, we'll just look at the spreadsheet again, maybe it just is a matter of the the split of the um account is just different.
Okay, okay.
Again, we're just going to publish all these new numbers before, after the twenty six, well, before the twenty sixth, it would be good to get all the new numbers in, once we've discussed everything. And you'll have a week because. Six days.
And is, is there any way I could just quickly, oh, if if you guys aren't done with the numbers, I'll hold off.
Um, I have to look at these numbers, but nothing here is, I have no other questions. Other councils have questions? Go ahead, Brendan, you have something else?
Yeah, it, I'm kind of brain dead today. Anyway, um, I just wanted to go back and and really thank uh Counselor uh J P and Peg um for helping us and, you know, residents of the community who uh did the Senior Tax Work Off Committee. I I, while we're getting ready to launch this, uh, I just, you know, this is such a huge plus, and I'm I'm starting to look at different ways of supporting our department and other departments through this program. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity, um, and and just to see the dedication and commitment from the Senior Tax Work Off Committee. And and just, you know, people really kind of coming together, department heads and and other folks from the community, trying to establish this program to provide some affordable living for, you know, a population that, you know, quite frankly, you know, with their retirement, isn't matching up with the cost of living in real time. And so what we need just what, you know, we need to use as many tools as we possibly can to support our seniors aging in place. And I consider this a huge success, and I'm really looking forward to it. Jen has been, you know, uh, helping us out with this and and crunching the numbers and and making this a possibility. Like I said, Peg Coniff, J P, and and many other people uh from my board who have just spent, you know, countless hours talking to me on the phone as to how to, you know, make this program possible. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who has been part of the process.
You know, I wanted to say, Brendan, that that's fantastic. We've been looking at that for years, and I'm happy it's finally come to fruition. And it took an effort from J P and and Peg and everybody. The other thing to think about as I'm a retired person is getting these people to be out there doing something is just as important as it is to give them dollars for it. To have a retired person feel like they're contributing in some way to the city.
Yeah.
It's it's going to make, it 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 helps with retirement depression, and I think it's so valuable. So I hope it works. I hope it works. I really do, and I think it will, because you guys are working hard on it.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think, you know, and and the thing that I, you know, can't help but to emphasize that this can also be used in in addition to like the senior tax exemption. And so this is like a huge win for folks that just find themselves in a difficult situation. And, you know, between, you know, the the cost of health insurance and other areas, you know, for a lot of our retirees and and people who are new to Medicare, i- it's really a shame. And so this is like one more thing that allows us to say, okay, we've got another, you know, resource for, and and it's something that's been designed by our community, so we should take so much pride in that. And and we're falling in the footsteps of other communities by, you know, helping this program be accessible.
Thank you, Brendan. Uh, Councilors, do you have anything else for the Council on Aging?
No, other than, you know, thank you to, I'm going to just echo what Brendan said, but I'm going to reflect it back on him and his board for being so willing to pick up the Senior Tax Work Off Program and and kind of bring it over the finish line. So I'm excited for it, too. So let's let's see if we can get that thing going. But no, I have no further questions.
So, uh, moving on to the veterans, thank you, Brendan. We'll let you know if there's any questions uh for the twenty sixth, but you should come on the second when the budget is being developed. I doubt there'll be any issues, but.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Brendan.
Is the Veterans Agent on the call? I don't know. I didn't send an email, so.
Michael Slater is on the phone.
Michael, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, we're talking about your budget.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to, as I've asked others, do you want to talk about anything that's over the past year that you've confronted with the with pandemic or moving forwards for veterans in our community?
Um, I I'd just like to echo the the same that that Brendan and and Bree were saying, like, to be able to partner with the C O A and the Health Department to address, you know, veteran issues, uh, whether it be elderly veterans or veterans in need of 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 different services, has been a really great program. But um, other than that, um, I just think it's really been a year of me learning how to 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 handle veteran services and everything. And and moving forward, I think that we've done a pretty good job in supporting the East Hampton veterans.
So our salary that we see here, if I've highlighted here, three ten, um, our supplies and services, the the services for direct aid to to veterans, it's down. Is that i- i- it's up from last year, twenty twenty actual, but down from the twenty one budget. And I'm just curious, is that a reflection of the numbers that you anticipate having to service?
So it's down, um.
From your twenty one budget?
From the twenty but, yes, and I think we're actually, even the twenty one budget to three forty, we're going to come in well below that on this year. So we're really attacking the employable client, um, the ones that can go out and get jobs, um, and getting them back into the workforce through different agencies, which I think is going to bring down the amount of benefit we're paying out to that part of the demographic uh and will allow us to bring down the municipal responsibility um in in that that category.
Can I ask the difference between the first line under five four three zero, supplies and services, and the second under five four 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 zero, supplies and services? I'm curious, what's the difference there?
So the five four three zero, that is, the city is part of a veteran district with South Hadley. Um, so I cover both communities. The forty two three nine nine, that is East Hampton's financial responsibility to running the district, which covers my salary, um, supplies and all those things. And the other line, the three ten, that is simply chapter one fifteen benefits that the city pays to East Hampton veterans.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Yeah, any questions from Counselor Coniff or Counselor Gomez?
You already answered my question.
Yeah, the three forty to three ten was my question, too, so.
Yep.
I think that that's actually, from what you're saying, Michael, should I interpret that to be good news in terms of getting folks into the workforce? That's kind of the goal, right? You want to do that. You want to get people out there so that they can feel good about their lives and being employable. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, so that that demogra- it's only one part of the different categories of benefits that we pay out. You have, you know, the older veteran whose retirement, like Brendan was saying, isn't equal to the cost of living. So that's one demographic for us that really is not going to change. But the employable one, really, it's it's a large ton of money that we're paying out every month to people who who can physically work. Um, and I've partnered with Veterans Inc's employment specialists to really get the clients that we have that are employable at the forefront of now that the economy is coming back to life, all these jobs are coming up. We've had, we have eight employable clients, and four of them have obtained employment as of today. Um, so that'll cut that number for the rest of, I mean, it's only one month left in the fiscal year. But we were roughly paying, I think it was six thousand dollars a month to employable clients. So that'll go down drastically, um, down to between three and two and three thousand dollars.
That's great. It's wonderful.
Have you found these, uh, this is just me curious, that local businesses are receptive to hiring veterans? Or are you talking about getting them work anywhere in the valley?
Um, so the goal, I mean, I'll get them a job anywhere. But to to keep them in the community, a lot of them are transportation.
Challenged?
Have transportation, yes, challenged. Um, so there's one, two. One of them got a job with the post office. He'll be a mail carrier. And then another one got a local job at one of the restaurants here in South, uh, East Hampton. So it, the community seems very supportive uh of of coming out and and helping veterans, you know, find employment and things like that.
Awesome.
Well, I've been harping on, every time it comes up, the C P A just paid for rent relief. And one of the things I was thinking about are veterans who are laid off or not working. We don't want any of them homeless, and and I know that this benefit helps them, but I also know that we need to give them rent relief if we need to. So you're doing a great job. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Agreed. Thanks.
Any other questions, Counselor Gomez, anything?
Nope.
So I believe we're done for the evening. Uh, this will be voted on, and Michael, I doubt there'd be any question for you on the twenty sixth. You might want to attend. I doubt there'd be any problem for your budget on the second, but that's when there's a public hearing for the full council.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
And thank you, everybody else. I have some questions for the committee members.
Okay.
Um, I didn't put out the seventeenth agenda, which is primarily education. There's two things I need to talk to you. You've seen from Marion Goldstein, he wants to get the finance committees together. I'm opposed to that, and I wanted to ask you what you think. I think if we have questions moving forward on COVID grant funding, we should go directly to the supervisor. Uh, I'm not superintendent, but I wanted to ask you, I didn't want to say no to that meeting without talking to both of you. Do you remember him asking, telling you about that?
Yep, I I absolutely don't think we necessarily need to do that. I think I think this became a much more complex discussion than I think any of us intended for it to be. It seemed very straightforward, but was not received in a very straightforward way. So if this is creating agita, I would just as soon take it off the agenda, and we'll ask questions and bring them back if we still have questions. But it it's, it turned into something a little more stressful than I think I was expecting it to be.
I just had my vocabulary, which is not extensive, uh, increased by one word, agita. I got to look at. Counselor Gomez, what's your opinion on that?
My opinion is that I'm not going to give you any opinion because as.
You're older, but in school department.
Because my wife worked at the school department, and I uh.
All right, that's that's fair. So the other thing we did get, and I wanted to put it on the agenda for the seventeenth. The Superintendent did send us a breakdown of COVID grant uses. And I wanted to put it down in case we had questions about that, and I do. So I don't mind at the top of that agenda on the seventeenth is to go over those numbers. Do you have any objection to that?
No. I mean, here's, I want to spend the next couple of meetings going over the city budget. And the the grant funded COVID Save America money is an interesting exercise for us, but it's unrelated to the budget, per se. And I want to know what we got, but it's, it it feels to me like not something that we necessarily need to put before we finish the budget conversations. But I can be persuaded either way.
My only concern is how it is perceived to affect the school's budget in the sense that if there's gaps, I don't see any reason why, and I think the city's doing the same thing. That kind of funding from ESER or from the ARPA grants that are coming up can't fulfill, fill holes that are occurring. And I'm going to make that statement, but I will take that off of the agenda then and just deal with the bu- uh, education. I'm fine. I just needed your opinion on it. And I have to tell you, Counselor Coniff, it's just me and you at the next meeting, because, again, Counselor Gomez doesn't, has to recuse himself from education.
Okay, fair enough.
And to say another thing, I think I've got it solved, because Dr. Kamahort gave me a laptop. I will be in Pennsylvania, and as my wife is going to see her mother for the first time in a year and a half. And I will do, Monday night, I will do Zoom. Thank God for Zoom, so I can be anywhere part of the world.
Exactly.
So I'm going to do that Monday night, but it will be just me and you. Lastly, I wanted to ask the council if I could change the, and I ask you guys, the.
Yes, Mayor?
Oh, do you have something to say, Ms.?
No, Nicole's got a, she's looks like she doesn't like and or understand what we just were talking about. You're on mute.
Yeah, no, it it just blinked out, like the.
It's environmental.
Maybe I blinked out. Maybe I blinked out. All good, all good.
Sorry, Dan.
Anyway, review of monthly fiscal reports and monthly report on COVID-nineteen grant funding, I wanna change that to quarterly.
Okay.
But I, I think we need to ask the city council for that change, do you guys object to that at all?
Yeah.
I think it'll give us time for both the auditor and if we want to have numbers moving forward, uh, the first quarter of, of the new fiscal year, which would be July, August, September, we would ask in September for reports.
Okay.
Alright, so at the next council meeting, I'm gonna change that agenda item, both of those, to be, to be constant agenda items for quarterly reports.
Okay.
That's all I have, anything else?
No, motion to adjourn?
Second?
I have a motion to adjourn, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
I'm blanking out, and I'm Counselor Ristic, yeah.
Have a great night, bye.
Bye, everybody.